The afternoon session of the Board of County Commissioners meeting for whatever date it is today, November something. Please silence your phones if you have not done so, and we're gonna start with P 57. Did I get the right one, Teri?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman and members of the board, we have proof of publication in the hearing of this matter on August the 6th, 2025, Tampa Bay Times for the, for this meeting.
Okay.
Actarios Pito's Plan for Developing Economic Growth, MP 57, is in ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners to amend the land development code to update our tree preservation and replacement standards. This item is being requested for a continuance to the February 17, 2026, Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 PM. This is a continuance of the adoption hearing all the way out to February 17. The item will be heard at the upcoming November 20 LPA meeting, Global Planning Agency meeting.
Okay, so this is an extension from when we talked last time. You're not pushing it out further?
No, this is a continuance of the adoption hearing itself, so we'll have the November 20 LPA meeting, then there will be a subsequent presentation to the Board of County Commissioners where no action is taken, and then February 17 is the adoption.
Okay, so we're, I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding, are we gonna hear anything more in December? Or why do we have to wait so long? I just wanna get this done as quick as possible.
It's gotta get through the Planning Commission, your first hearing, this is the adoption hearing.
The second, the first BCC hearing is gonna be January 6.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. Okay, so you don't need a motion, right?
Yes.
Move to continue time service.
Okay.
Second.
On favor? Aye. All right, thank you. P 58.
We approve publication in the Tampa Bay Times, July 23, 2025, supplemented by affidavit certified mailing of pipe site postings for the September 3 Board of County Commissioners meeting where it was continued to today.
This item is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan for a small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the future land use map from AGR, Agricultural Rule to RES 1, Residential One-Doning for Gross Acre in the Northeast Rural Pasco County Rural Protection Area. This item is being requested for a continuance to the January 6, 2026, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 PM and date city.
Move to continue time service. Second.
On favor? Aye. P 59.
We approve publication in the Tampa Bay Times, September 3, 2025, for the October 21st, 2025 Board Meeting where it was continued to today.
Item P 59 is PD 260002. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 522.9, Connected City Master Plan Unit Development District, Section 901, Infrastructure Standards, Section 901.1, Transportation Corridor Spacing, Section 901.6, Street Design and Dedication Requirements, Section 901.7, Bicycle Facilities, Section 901.8, Pedestrian Facilities, Appendix A Definitions and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for applicability repealer, Providing for Severability, Inclusion into Land Development Code and an Effective Date. This comes, this is the first presentation or reading of the proposed ordinance, no action is required. The Board of County Commissioners request to accept public comment, and we have a presentation if so desired.
Okay, does anyone need a presentation? Okay, um, let me see if there's any public comment on this.
We have no one online.
Okay. All right, and I could just pass unanimously out the planning commission, I listened to the meeting. All right, did anyone want to, I guess, no action taken? Is that what I heard you say?
No, this is, this is accept public comment. Yeah, but, yeah, and no action taken, it's the first of two public hearings.
I know Rebecca worked very hard on this one. Do you wanna give a presentation, or are we, we good to go?
I'm ready to give a presentation today. This may be like 10 minutes.
Okay. For?
This will show what the new pedestrian standards are gonna look like along Collector's and Arterial Roads.
Okay, let's get, let's have a presentation.
Rebecca Bowe, Planning Development Economic Group.
Yeah.
All right, so the intent of this ordinance update is to make some updates for internal consistency. We're also allowing friction course as a roadway material. We're consolidating Sections 901.7 and 901.8 into a comprehensive section titled Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities. We're also including in that rewrite some enhanced standards for site location and connectivity. And the overall goal here is to strengthen the county's position to require land development projects to build segments of our overall multimodal network. We did take this to the Planning Commission on 9/18 and on 10/16. At the 9/18 hearing, there was a lot of discussion about our previous version of this rewrite, where we were asking for these trails to be built on the south or east side. There was concern that this particular piece was rigid and may cause issues with aligning with existing facilities. So we revised it to require 10-foot trails or multi-use paved trails on both sides of arterial and collector roads, and we hope that this will create a symmetrical network, support updates to future typical sections, as well as simplify administration. There was also concerns at the 9/18 LPA meeting regarding whether or not we should be requiring these facilities in rural areas. In response to that, we went back and explicitly exempted these requirements in future land use categories, AG, AGR, and RES 1.
Um, can I stop you there for a second?
Thanks.
I don't know if you saw the two-year-old that was killed, because they were walking out here somewhere, and there's no, no sidewalk, no, no, no place for that father to walk with his two-year-old safely.
It's behind public in the community, and there are sidewalks in there.
Oh, so, so he was, he chose not to be on the sidewalk? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we also brought this to the 10/16 Planning Commission, and at that meeting, there was discussion about the requirements to mark shoulders as bicycle facilities. Ultimately, we, there was a motion made to remove that language. All right. Oops. Okay, okay. Okay, so summary of our overall changes here is our current 901.7 is applicable to RES 3, future land use or higher, and it's on subdivision collector roads, they're required to provide either a bike lane or a 12-foot multi-use path. Section 901.8, pedestrian facilities, is also applicable to RES 3, future land use or higher on all street types except for alleys, and the requirements there are for either a five-foot sidewalk on collector or arterial streets, or a four-foot sidewalk on all other streets. What we're proposing by combining the two is a land development code that's applicable to all sites, except in the agricultural, agricultural rural, and residential one, future land use categories, and the requirements would vary by street type. So on arterials and collectors, they're, they'd be required to provide a 10-foot paved multi-use trail on both sides. On residential subdivisions, we're asking for a five-foot sidewalk on one side, an eight-foot multi-use paved trail on the other side, and on our residential roads, we're looking for five-foot sidewalks on both sides. We're also adding connections or standards for onsite circulation and connectivity standards, so this would require land development projects to connect all their buildings, connect to the external bike pad network, and in parking lots with 100 spaces or more, they're required to provide sidewalks from the parking lot to the principal building. We're also adding a payment in lieu of construction option. This option would be available where there's already is facility programs in the capital improvement program, or where it would otherwise not be feasible to build a facility by the site. We're also adding a definition for paved multi-use trail. This is our overall vision, what we hope this land development code will ultimately And as mentioned, this is the first public hearing with adoption set for December 9.
Any questions?
Question. Did this go before the Tampa Bay Builders Association?
We did have communications with them, yes, via email.
I think you need to have a meeting with them.
We didn't have like a meeting, no.
Was it a phone call, or was it a meeting?
It was an email communication, and of course, we took it to our ordinance development team in the Horizontal Roundtable.
Okay, so they had presence there?
Yes.
All right, and there's no problem with it?
They did provide some comments, like minor adjustments to the corridor spacing language, which we needed some speaks to. Their biggest concern was our requirement for boardwalks over wetlands. We're asking for those boardwalks to be constructed of concrete materials.
Yeah, 'cause the other ones don't last, and the neighborhood has a massive repair I have a question. Does this take care of issues like some of the new developments that were built, say along 52, that did not put a sidewalk across the front of their property?
Yes, this would require all applications post-adoption to build a 10-foot facility.
Okay, 'cause that's, I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna fix that, but we have some issues that we're gonna have to go back in and fix. Okay, is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this ordinance?
See no one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Long time coming. All right, next one is?
P 60. We approve publication Tampa, we approve publication Tampa Bay Times, October 5, 2025.
Item P 60 is PD 260022. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 1302.2, Mobility Fees. To clarify, that the 2025 mobility fee schedules do not expire on December 31, 2025, and amending other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability, inclusion into land development code, and an effective date. This also is the first presentation of the ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners, no action is required, though we ask to accept public comment, and there's a presentation if desired.
Board members, do you have any questions? Okay, is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. Anyone online?
No one online.
Okay. I think it's a no action. P 61?
P 61, we have proof of publication Tampa Bay Times, September 3, 2025.
P 61 is PD 260001. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, creating Section 530.25, Backyard Chickens, and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability repealer, providing for severability, inclusion into the land development code, and an effective date. This comes to you with the recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance amendment by roll call vote, and to accept public comment. We have a presentation if so desired.
I think we heard the presentation already, so, so I think we're good. What, 14 years coming, or 15 years for this, Darrell?
Yeah.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address our chicken ordinance?
Chair, I have a question. Terry, did you take, I just wanted to be clear that your team took the bureaucracy out of having chickens, correct?
Yeah, well, that, uh...
I mean, chickens should be fun and somewhat easy to have.
Yes.
The original way made it cumbersome and seemingly not very fun.
Afternoon Commissioners, Amanda Hill, Planning Development Economic Group. The previous recommendation by the board to remove the permit requirement has been removed.
Thank you.
All right, so let's take a roll call vote. I need a motion first, though.
Move approval.
Oh, I did, I asked if anyone wanted to speak about chickens.
Online.
No one's online. Okay, I take a motion?
Second. I'm glad no one's chicken.
Roll call vote. No one's, no one's here to object about my chickens.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Hallelujah, aye.
You go.
Chickens are in. Okay, P 62.
P 62, proof of publication against September 3, 2025, in the Tampa Bay Times.
No, did I skip one?
Yeah.
P 61, sorry, I already flipped my paper.
61 was backyard chicken.
Oh, that was the picture.
Another one, 62.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
They're completely related to 62.
Okay, P 62. Also chickens.
Item P 62 is PD 260028. This is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, amending Section 14-27 Definitions, creating Section 14-150 Conditions for the Keeping of Chickens, Section 14-151 Coops and Enclosures, Section 14-152 Health, Sanitation and Nuisance, Section 14-153 Education and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for applicability repealer, Providing for Severability, Inclusion into the Court of Ordinances, and an Effective Date. This comes to you with the recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance by roll call vote, and accept public comment, and we have a presentation.
Chair.
Yep.
Terry, back to our previous conversation. Don't really wanna have code bogged down anymore than they already are, so do we, we make it less cumbersome for the coops and everything associated with it, like we discussed the last meeting?
I can provide a presentation of the provisions for this one?
Let's do, let's do that, please.
Okay.
Hi, level up, yeah.
Okay, so the intent of this ordinance is to provide standards related to the keeping of chickens for residential properties, as now allowed by Section 530.25 of the LDC. This is a summary of those provisions. The amendment proposes the creation of a new Article 3 in Chapter 14 Animals. Section 14-150 specifies that the property owner is allowed up to four hens, no roosters, and requires a property to be occupied and not used as a vacation rental. Section 14-151 provides additional details on the coops, including the maximum size and height, space per bird, and specifying the location to be restricted to the side or rear yards. The coops are required to be accessible for cleaning and maintained accordingly so as not causing nuisance. Section 14-152 speaks further to the requirement for nuisance control, and provides procedures for disease management and disposal of birds. And finally, Section 14-153 requires the completion of the UF IFAS course, the ability for code compliance to conduct monitoring compliance as necessary, and the requirement that...
Let's, let's pause there.
Yeah, I thought we took that out.
Now, the, the course was supposed to be...
The permit requirement was removed.
And the course.
The course was supposed to be removed also.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with that, because you can just Google how to take care of chickens.
So, I'm gonna read directly from the actual red line as to what the language states right now. So, prior to obtaining chickens, the property owner must enroll in and complete a certification course offered by UF IFAS of Pasco County. The property owner shall allow access to the premises by code compliance officials for the purposes of monitoring compliance with the requirements of this chapter. Failure to allow for inspection upon request with reasonable notice shall be addressed by any of the methods available in Section 108 of this code and Article 5, Division 4 of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances. That's the language in terms of monitoring and compliance.
Yeah, you were right, you were taking the course out, the permit and the course.
Yeah, what's, what's the, it's the Section 14-153 that we were thinking might have been overkill.
So that section had both the course and the permit requirement, and we removed the permit requirement. I have details on the course here in terms of what it includes. It's at the board's discretion if you'd like staff to remove that language as well regarding the course, but we thought that it was important to include that, so that persons who are first-time chicken owners, that they have the necessary education to take care of the chickens, because they're not similar to pets, they have specific needs, and to ensure that there are any compliance issues caused due to how the chickens are kept.
Yeah.
I understand you as staff think it's important to include that. We as a board, last meeting specifically in the majority said remove it. Couldn't have been any clearer.
Yeah.
And I'm good to have the information available for the people, but taking the course just looks like an extra expense for, to slow down. I'm okay with the monitoring as well.
Yeah, I'm okay with the monitoring.
Because I think you need to, just in case you have someone who's going rogue, or isn't maintaining it, and you got rats and snakes, whatever, so I'm okay with the monitoring part, but just, just that education part?
Okay.
You can make it available, which I think I should do, but...
But not a requirement.
That'll be it.
Can we, can we say it is suggested that participants, but not required?
I think we can just include that on the website or educational type of thing, I don't need to see any ordinance.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if they didn't have a course, then other counties aren't requiring that, right? Yeah. Okay. Okay, go, move on.
Did you need me to provide details on the course itself?
No.
No, we don't need it.
No, it's all be the ordinance.
We don't want it.
Okay. So this is just a comparison by jurisdiction that we did, looking at some of our neighbors and what they currently have. Most of the communities do not have a permit requirement. City of Brandonon and, let's see, Hernando County, I believe, were the only two jurisdictions that required a permit. Were middle of the pack in terms of the number of birds and not having any roosters allowed, and in terms of the square footage of the coop and the minimum size per bird, were also middle of the pack there. Most of these ordinances were adopted between 2011 and as early as 2025.
I have a question. What the heck is a pullet?
Little chicken.
A what?
Little chicken.
A little chicken?
Young, young chicken.
A chick? No.
No, bigger than a chick.
It's like a...
Never heard of it.
Kinda like a, sort of a teenager.
A teenage chicken?
Sorta.
There you go.
Oh, my gosh.
A tweed. Tweet.
Okay.
It's not yet laid.
Tweenie. Okay.
And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
I had one answered.
This comes to the board with a recommendation for approval, and we would make the changes to remove the educational requirement.
Okay, all right. We've made our comments, unless you have some more? Is there anyone here that wishes to address the chickens and pullets ordinance? Did I say it right?
Yeah.
Actually, it's hens and pullets. Do you have anyone online who wishes to address this?
No one online.
Madam Chairman, in addition to the motion that's found in your package, can we also get you to waive introduction of this ordinance?
Okay, I will accept that in the motion.
So, who?
Side out.
Yeah, we need to modify the motion to change the language to the county administrators, shaking his head, so we need to amend the motion to the IFAS language to...
Yeah.
Motion made, as the county attorney said, with a noted changes on no educational requirement.
Okay, all right.
And I second.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Wegman.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Yes. Thank you so much for all your work on the chickens. P 63.
P 63, we have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the September 17th, 2025 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Denise Hernandez, Code Compliance Department. Today is the adoption hearing on this item. This item was, there was a full presentation on October 21st of this item. This item was presented to the local planning agency who found the ordinance consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, and it was also presented to the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties Meeting on September 17, 2025. So today I ask that you adopt by roll call vote. It's an ordinance by the Pasco County, accept public comment, of course, amend and adopt by roll call vote, hopefully. An ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 530.5, Parking or Storing of Recreational Vehicles, Section 530.16, Parking and Storage of Commercial Vehicles and Commercial Equipment, Insertal, Certain Residential Areas Prohibited, and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for applicability repealer, Providing for Severability, Inclusion into, Inclusion into the Land Development Code and Effective Date. Again, ask that you adopt, accept public comment, adopt by roll call vote, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Chair.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Yeager brought this up when we discussed this last time, and we started looking further into it, and spoke with the county administrator about this yesterday. The employer, employer, employee markets have changed, and commercial, commercial vehicles are smaller. Some people use them as regular family cars, you see them in lines with kids taking to schools, they're just not wrapped with, you know, mics AC on there, they just be plain clothes, right? And for employers, that allows some of their employees to take their work vans or utility vehicle, it's not an oversized vehicle home, the reasons for that is their van may be loaded for that week or that project for the first three, four days of the week, and they can go from home to the job site and come back, which it takes less traffic going to and from their jobs, their, you know, where their office is for commuting, what have you. So I'm torn with this, because, because that's just the nature of the market.
I don't think that's what this is addressing.
No, it doesn't allow them to park it at their home, because they're a more commercial vehicle.
That's incorrect, Commissioner. That's not what we're addressing. That is already not allowed by the regular ordinance. All this is clarifying is that it can't be parked in the, in the county right-of-way, and they can't be parked in MPUD. The remainder of the ordinance doesn't, doesn't change.
So, I will tell you...
So are we gonna bring up potentially amending that down the line in the future?
I don't know, but what's going on, on this and here, in Starkey Ranch and other developments that have on-street parking?
It happens in Avalon Park.
On, on main roads, is people are bringing their boats, their four whee, what are those trucks that they have the cabs?
Semi-tractor trailers.
Semi-tractor trailers?
Yeah.
There are these, and they are parking them along Starkey...
Yeah, they're using on-street parking spaces that are supposed to be for people who live there to park their, number one, that's why we're modifying 530.5, again, this was a code compliance issue, for recreational vehicles, so that basically what people are bringing is their boat trailers, just putting the boat trailer in an on-street parking space. They're putting the boats and the boat trailers, they're also doing, as Commissioner, Commissioner Starkey stated, that's why we're modifying 530.16, they're also bringing their semi-tractor trailers, their tow trucks, et cetera, and they're parking them in on-street parking spaces that are dedicated for just regular passenger vehicles to park there, residents to park there.
And the residents' guests. In front of our Blueberry Farm, which is converting to residential community, we have on-street parking that our family donated to make, so that there will be parking spaces that will be counted in for the apartments that will go there one day, and we have had for a couple months now, three people parking their work trailers there. You know, the kind you pull behind the truck, like a lawn mower company or whatever? And they've, they've, they've been leaving them every month. That's what this is addressing.
I think that happens in Avalon Park, it's been a consistent issue, but...
Okay. That, yours is a...
Maybe, all right.
Well, no, what I was gonna ask Denise, but what the commissioner is referring to is also covered in this portion of the ordinance, and so if the board wants to take that up...
Okay, so I'm not all the way crazy then?
No, you're not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 'cause I have a note here, too.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that we're not really modifying not parking commercial vehicles or residential, because that's already, it's already in the code. See, the only thing that's being modified here is what's included in bold red underline.
Okay.
So everything else is regular code.
I agree with that, but back to, since this, since this code is up, the board's willing, I'm open to, to readdressing the people's work vehicles. It's, you know, they could be used also as a family van, essentially, if they're similar, that they should be able to park them at, at their house and not be sighted.
So Commissioner, I think that might be a little simpler, which is perhaps we can work on modifying the definition of a commercial vehicle.
Okay.
And that would handle that. Thank you.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. Yes.
That'd be a nice, nice fix. Do that and bring it back, yeah.
But let's keep moving with this, because we gotta deal with this issue, and right now, we can't do anything. The sheriff can't do anything, the communities can't do anything, we can't do anything. All right, so is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Okay, Denise, I have a question for you, because, you know, we've been working with the Starkey Ranch CDD. How does it, and this may be a David Goldstein question, I don't know, how does it work with the CDDs when, I'm trying to understand, who owns the, who's in charge of the parking spaces? Who is the one who's gonna call for ticketing or towing? Is it the... Who is the one who's going to call for ticketing or towing? Is it the county? Is it the CDD district? How does that work?
Um, is it, can we check to see if Sam Bounty is on this call? If not, I'm going to try to address that to the best of my ability. Is, is he on WebEx? Not, okay.
Let's see if he's paying attention.
No problem. So, okay, no problem. So I will try to address that. So my understanding, and I think we have to still have one last meeting with, start with Starkey Ranch. So my understanding is that the CDD is going to work on placing signs.
Yeah.
And that the actual enforcement of it is going to occur through the sheriff's office.
Okay.
That is the last that I had heard on the matter, and that is roughly a week and a half ago when I, when I talked about that.
Okay, and I think we're going to do a little period of information first to let everyone know, okay, you're not allowed to do this. There'll be a little grace period, and then people are going to have to do the right thing.
That the enforcement is going to happen through the sheriff's office.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so no one's here to speak to anything? Anyone online?
No, we have no one.
Okay, this is...
Roll call vote.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Wakeman.
Aye.
District, uh, Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Stark.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oof, the community will be very happy.
Thank you, Denise, for looking into that.
Thank you.
All right, P sixty-four.
Hi, Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco County's Office of Management and Budget. I'm here with item P sixty-four or O N B twenty-six zero.
Hang on, hang on one second, Amy.
Proof of publication, first. We have proof of publication in the Tampa Bay Times, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, of the hearing of this matter at this time.
All right, all right. Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco County's Office of Management and Budget. I'm here with item P sixty-four or O N B twenty-six zero 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 three, which is an ordinance to establish a law enforcement municipal service taxing unit. Um, so there's a couple statutes that allows the board to establish a municipal service taxing unit. Those are up there on the slides. The first step is for the board to adopt an ordinance that would establish it. If the cities were to participate, one way that they would do that is by after our ordinance gets adopted by the board, they would have to adopt one of their own. So what this ordinance provides, it establishes the MSTU for law enforcement for the unincorporated areas of Pasco County. It will define the powers, boundaries, and duties for law enforcement. It provides a legal existence and status, allows the levying of Avalon taxes to provide funding, but this is not the actual process. We won't actually be talking about millage rates here. This is just setting up the ordinance. And then we would follow the typical budget process and the trim process. All right, so I pretty much just said this. So we, so let's assume this gets adopted today. We would then come back at our trim meeting in July to establish the maximum millage rate, and that would, you will remember, require a unanimous vote by the board. And then the, the tax would be stood up for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget. All right, so what do we need to do today? Accept public comment, and then vote on the ordinance to provide for the MSTU by roll call.
Wonderful. For anyone with any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So we looked at doing this years ago.
Yeah.
And as we talked about, the, the problem came in when really one gentleman made a comment. You're going to put the burden of law enforcement on... We've got July fourteenth as the date for your next step. I know you're working with the cities right now, but I don't want to support this until you've got the agreements in place. You know, we help the parades, we help with certain things that they need help on. You can structure it where it's population-based as far as how you tax, like gas tax. We don't break out for every little gas station where they are. We just base it upon everybody equally sharing, getting their share where they can allocate how they want to spend their money. So that's like equity for everybody at that point. So I want to see that done because, uh, to me, I don't want to put that shift on unincorporated citizens the way this is going to be shifted now.
Uh, question on that. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well...
I'll go after you.
So you got cities you're talking about not paying, but yet they have their own police force.
Exactly.
So they are paying toward their own police force within the city.
Yeah, but...
Just, yes.
We're still helping, like Pasco County Sheriff's Office is still going into the cities and helping them.
Then there should probably be some kind of fee that they have to pay for extra help from the county.
And maybe that fee looks, is different than the MSTU. Maybe we just say, we're not coming into your city unless you're helping pay, and let's figure out what that is. And remember, those cities are little.
You need SWAT team, fifty grand.
Yeah.
In all the car price, I mean.
Hey, we have no property tax. You want the sheriff to come to your house? How we going to fund it? I don't know.
So if I may, Madam Chair, I have been in contact with, with the city managers and have had this discussion. And I know Chase and the sheriff's, sheriff's office are, are kind of piecing together what those actual costs look like in terms of serving the citizens, whether it's through SWATs, detective service, or even parades. And so I've, I've gotten, you know, commitments that we're going to work together towards something equitable. I understand, Commissioner Mariano, July is, is not too far away. It's far enough away, but it's not far away. And so we will endeavor to work on interlocal agreements or whatever the necessary mechanisms are to ensure equity for the citizens of Pasco County when it comes to providing law enforcement services. Noting that, yes, some do have police services, but that the sheriff also, you know, is, is the, you know, the big law enforcement agency here for, for the county, provides a lot of service and backup to these. I know Chase is here in case you wanted to hear from the sheriff's office, but I think we, you know, we'll, we'll work to endeavor to what the board wishes.
Yeah, I think we work really well with our cities.
I, I would love to hear how, I honestly would love everybody to hear how the sheriff's office helps other cities. That's okay, Chase?
Good afternoon, Chase Daniels, Under Sheriff Community Outreach Operations, Pasco Sheriff's Office. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And as the administrator noted, we have been working very, very closely with this. I thank Amy and her team as well for, for including us. As it stands today, we are fully in support of this MSTU in this language to speak specifically to how, how it works with the cities. So yes, you, you all are absolutely correct that we do help the cities. So for instance, most of the cities do not have the ability to investigate major crimes, things like homicides. They do not have their own forensics units and things like that. So that is a resource that we, we provide to them. Also, when it comes to large events, for instance, the Christmas parades that are coming up, we provide security and assistance with those types of large events as well. So what we are working on, so the sheriff has a quarterly meeting with the chiefs of police. So as part of that meeting, we will be informing them moving forward that this could be an option or, and something they need to talk about with their city managers or city councils. Uh, we are also starting to build payroll codes. So for instance, if we have someone that is on, you know, someone in our, in our forensics unit who has to go out to one of these scenes to assist the cities, we are going to start capturing exactly how much time we spend assisting the cities, whether it be, like I said, forensics through one of those, one of those big events or those major events like the Christmas parades. We're going to start capturing all, all those things and essentially telling the cities, hey, if you do not come onto the MSTU, this is going to be a billed service to you, or you can, you know, take it upon yourself if you wish to create a forensics unit or something like that. But essentially, i- if a city does not come along, th- those are the options that, that we're planning to give them right now.
Excellent.
Yeah. So the unincorporated taxpayers are really carrying the weight of a pile of additional services. Yep.
Madam Chairman, if, if I can ask Chase a question. So the cities that you currently are providing a hundred percent service for because they don't have a police force, you have a con, I'm assuming you have a contract with them, and they fund that operation in that manner, correct?
Yes, sir. That, that's correct. So for instance, that is San Antonio and St. Leo. They enter into a contract with us, and then we provide those law enforcement services in lieu of the, in lieu of the cities. But those are paid for the, for the total cost of the deputy.
And so they, and so they, they are levying a millage on their residents for your service and collecting it that, collecting it in that manner.
Yeah, however it goes with, with the contract, we, we just know they, they pay us the contract. However, they, they raise that revenue to pay that contract.
And so that would be an option for the other cities as well, if, if they wanted to contract with you for SWAT services, for forensic services, that would be another, other than pulling them into the MSTU, they, they could provide a funding source for that as well.
Contractually.
Contractually.
If, if that was something that they want to pursue, absolutely. Or again, you know, we could just give them the, the real cost of services, or they could, they could do it on their own. Uh, the one thing I, I should note, uh, and like I said in discussion with the administrator, Carbala, if there is some type of life safety thing, for instance, that there is, if there's an active shooter, you know, God forbid in Zephyr Hills or something, we will obviously make sure to provide those types of resources. We're, we're not going to let anyone be, be in danger over this, but it's kind of more of those ancillary things that, that happen after the fact, that, that we will, you know, be, be billing them for or raise that fee for.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Part of the thing with, like, if you can do utility charges, right, you've got to have the certain pipes in the ground, the treatment in place, the staffing involved to be able to run utility. Whether someone uses a drop of water, there's a fixed cost that's there. When you're going to set up for a forensic unit, we're going to set for a SWAT team. Others, other instances where you may need nine deputies on a vehicle for a school thing that's in front of a school that's in a city that you're going to jump on, you're not going to be able to count for all that. And part of the reason I said, just like we do with the gas tax, structured so it's population-based, everybody shares. Whatever the costs are to run the whole operation for the year, just like in a budget, that's what should be factored in the MSTU for every year, every year, every ti, every time a city is, is in there as well. You can't just go, all right, we're going to tell you forensics here. We're going to pay for the SWAT over here because it's not going to break out. You need those people in place. You need the training in place. So again, the reason this thing died last time was because of the burden falling to the county. And I just have the big fear, and until I see this worked out, I'm not going to support it. I want to see all the agreements in place.
But you can support...
Hang on. I'm good with San Antonio and St. Leo that we had set up because that's a different scenario, but you still got to factor those other things in, too. Whether they're going to use SWAT or not, that's got to be factored in your fixed costs. So I think these things need to be structured, and I want to see ahead of time before I'm going to shift the burden where it could fall heavier on the county citizens that aren't incorporated.
Commissioner Mariano, we could go ahead and set up the MSTU, but we don't have to fund it with anything until those deals are worked out. The sheriff's in, in support of this. I think we should move forward, but I, I hear what you're saying, and I think there's plenty of time to work that, that...
I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not going to support it because they've had all this time to look at it, all this time to talk about it. I don't think a quarterly meeting, now we're going to talk about it, is enough. This is going to be a big enough of an issue that's going to come forward. This stuff needs to be worked out ahead of time before the next step's taken.
And Commissioner Mariano, I have spoken with the city managers, and I would say over the course of the next three months, they recognize it's, it's, it's important to get this ironed out by the February, March timeline as we're establishing budgets. So, um, we will, we will certainly do our part to work with the cities. I think you've got some, you've outlined some great ideas. The base charge variable cost sort of model, you know, makes, makes sense and resonates. But we'll, we'll bring that. We, we will certainly, we understand that we need to bring something back.
And I'm going to say, this is not a thing that has to happen today. It's not something that has to happen this year even. But I think the details are more important to make sure it's labeled that everybody knows what's going to happen, how it's going to happen, where the cost is going to come. And if that takes more accounting, more time, et cetera, so be it. But I want to see it placed before that burden ever shifts to the, to the unincorporated county citizens.
Okay, um, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Is there anybody online?
No one online.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, before you entertain a motion, if the board is wishing to move forward with this, again, I would ask the board to add, add to the motion, um, the waiver of introduction of this ordinance and the final ordinance, the underlining, uh, which appears in section one, uh, should be deleted. I think it, I think it's a leftover from when drafts were going back and forth, but there's, there's underlining in your final version that shouldn't be there.
Thank you for pointing that out. I will accept what he said in the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept what the county attorney just stated, and that's part of the motion.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Wakeman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Four, Chairman Stark.
Aye, a three. I'm three.
Three.
But we heard you jack. It's important to get those one by one. All right, um, P sixty-five.
Yes, ma'am, let me catch up here. Uh, P sixty-five, we have proof of publication, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, Tampa Bay Times, for this hearing at this time.
Morning Commissioners, Ryan Gwynn, Fire Chief. FR twenty-six dash one zero zero four is an ordinance by the County Board, Board of County Commissioners, amending and restating ordinance seventy-nine dash twenty-eight and oh-one dash oh-one-two pertaining to the Pasco County Municipal Fire Service taxing unit by providing for additional municipal services to be funded, providing for a repealer, providing for severability, and providing for including into the county code of ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Essentially, the ordinance is to amend the restated ordinance of seventy-nine twenty-eight and oh-one oh-two, specifically expanding the municipal services so we can fund other, uh, assets out of there, including medical services. And this is the only required public hearing, so we ask that you accept public comment and adapt the ordinance amending the fire tax district and by roll call.
Okay, board members, any questions? Commissioner?
So similar to my line, and this is a lot different than when we just look and I bring in a new thing. We're already doing it for the fire. Now we're going to do it for the ambulance service. So in doing so, it's probably a lot easier for you to set costs that are coming up going forward, but still there's some fixed costs involved. Are we looking for the cities to be involved in this as well?
Yes, sir. We automatically, we already charge for, for EMS services. We charge all the citizens, whether they're in the city or out. So we recoup that money from them, the fireside. We do have the, we do have mutual aid agreements with the county, with the cities, but there are other services that we do bill for, our specific services, much like the sheriff's office, our hazardous materials responses, heavy rescue responses, things like that.
That's why we're so grateful to you, Billy, for parking the chief.
They are fantastic, sir.
Proud to recognize him every year.
They break records every month, sir. We're super proud of them, too.
Okay, uh, anyone else wish to speak to this item here? Do we have anyone online?
No one online.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, again, I would ask that introduction be waived in, in addition to the motion that's been, um, provided to you in your package.
Roll call vote with the county's attorney's information.
Second.
Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Wakeman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Commissioners, Chairman Stark.
Aye. P sixty-six.
We have proof of publication of this item in the July ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth of twenty twenty-five editions of the Tampa Bay Times for the meeting on August the fifth, twenty twenty-five, where it was continued to September third, where it was continued to October seventh, where it was continued to today.
Nick Tarius Pito's, Plank Development Economic Growth Department. Item P sixty-six is PD twenty-six zero 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 eight. This is an ordinance amending Pasco County ordinance, ordinance number twenty-one dash forty, contracting the boundaries of Two Rivers North Community Development District pursuant to chapter one ninety-four statutes, providing for miscellaneous provisions, providing for an effective date. And this comes to you with a recommendation to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. There's a presentation if you would like on a CDD.
I don't know if we need that for a CDD. Is anyone on it? No? Okay.
Roll call vote.
Uh, let me see if there's anyone who wants to speak to this item. Anyone online?
No one online.
Okay.
Um, you've got somebody approaching.
Oh, someone's approaching. Feel free to approach.
Brian Lamb, authorized agent for the Two Rivers North Community Development District, available to answer any questions if you do have them.
Uh, well, I did have...
So you made the motion.
Um...
I'm well versed on chickens, but we can...
No, no. Um, on, on, I think it's Lanier. We had some folks talking to us this morning about Lanier, and I was trying to see it on my map. I know this, um, are you connecting to Lanier? It looks like there's a little strip there. Um...
As far as the, the access for this, uh, the site that's being contracted?
Wait, there, see Lanier? And that goes to gravelly? And that goes to gravelly?
Yeah. This parcel will be connected off from the main entrance in, just prior to Lanier, which is running pretty much east-west.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The parcel that's being contracted from the district, the hexed-out section there.
Oh. Oh, what, commercial or something in the front?
Correct, yeah. That'll be a commercial parcel.
Okay. But do you know if Lanier is connecting, the two Laniers are connecting? I mean, I think when we established this development, they were supposed to connect.
Yes, as Nectarius Pito's Plan Development Economic Growth, again, Lanier, as it moves north from the Two Rivers Development, does connect into the old Lanier, which goes beyond.
Okay, and what about Anata Drive and that other one? See, coming off of Sunflower Hill Drive.
Yes, and Anata Drive is also.
There's another connection. Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, hang on that for a minute. So I'm trying to understand what we looked at earlier today from the comments, but, so Two Rivers Boulevard heading to the north, commercial sections over here we're adding in, and that Lanier Road is, is that the section of the road they were talking about with the residents today?
Well, it's not, it's not done yet.
No, but I mean, is that the Lanier Road that the people, the residents?
Uh, to the north, because they're having to divert from.
It would not be within the CDD boundaries.
Okay, so it's above from the CDD boundary, uh?
Right. It's that Lanier, based on the information we've seen over the last hour or so, so it's an old antiquated plat that is labeled Lanier, a grid pattern plat, which I'm assuming is north of the pink area there, but it would not be within the CDD boundaries.
But that road needs to be improved and taken over by the county.
What is, so what's driving the traffic up there? What's going on State Route fifty-six?
There's a sinkhole.
Okay. All right, I will say this. At one point, we had a bigger issue on State Route fifty-two. We directed people to go through Timber Oaks. When Timber Oaks came in for their assessment, we actually took care of the assessment, because we did a lot of damage to that road, so that may be something we can consider full in there for the future.
Oh, yeah, I definitely asked them to look at Lanier. It should be not, it needs to be a better quality road than what it is now. The county needs to take the maintenance. Okay. All right, so there's no one here to speak to this. Back to the board.
Motion on the table.
Motion second.
Okay, is this a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Stark.
Aye. P sixty-seven.
Approve publication of the hearing of this matter in the July twenty-third edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Item P sixty-seven is PDE twenty-six zero one four zero. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to future land use map, map two dash fifteen, and sheets zero five, eleven, twelve, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-three from AGR Agricultural Rural, res one residential, one dwelling unit per gross acre, res three residential, three dwelling units per gross acre, res six residential, six dwelling units per gross acre, res nine residential, nine dwelling units per gross acre, res twelve residential, twelve dwelling units per gross acre, and ROR Retail Office Residential to con conservation lands on approximately two thousand eight hundred and thirteen acres of real property located throughout Pasco County, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability, and an effective date. This comes to you as a recommendation to adopt the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation desired.
I don't need a presentation. We'll take Atlanta, come, right? Mr. Waitman, any questions on this one? Okay. Is there anyone here in the public who wishes to speak to this item? Do you have anyone online?
Do we have no one online? Adam.
Seeing no one, I'm going to approve.
Second. Roll call vote.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Stark.
Aye. They got some cogan grass to take out of there. They will be very busy. All right, we are to P sixty.
Seven.
Eight. All right, and then we go back to the R.
Right. P sixty-eight, we approve publication October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, in the Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by site postings for people.
Good afternoon Commissioners.
Do you have no rezoning items, nor do you have any quasi judicial items? So the two items don't need to be sworn in, or we don't need to re-proceed. Okay.
Rip them through this.
Adolfo Gonzalez, Utilities Engineering and Contract Management Director. P sixty-eight is file number UTD twenty-six dash zero zero nine eight for a resolution establishing a utility connection fee surcharge for the development of utility infrastructure along State Route fifty-two, beginning at US forty-one and ending at Interstate seventy-five, establishing the rates for the surcharge, establishing the boundaries for the surcharge, providing for applicability and an effective date. Commissioners, we have been planning, and we're about to finalize the water, wastewater, and reclaimed water master plans for Pasco County utilities. Our objective in considering future improvements is to maintain adequate water quality, flow, and pressure throughout our system and to our customers. We do that by looking at and monitoring trends in population growth, user demands, the existing condition of our utility infrastructure. We take all that into account when planning for future expansions to not just our wastewater and water plant, but also our water main and sewer transmission network. I'd like to focus on one item in terms of future demand, and that's employment centers. This graphic shows within the county, the orange highlighted boxes, areas that are zoned as employment centers, which derive, which could derive an additional benefit to the county in terms of job, creating jobs that will create additional economic growth for the county. Our focus is, from the comprehensive plan, is to identify extensions that could serve future employment centers. Again, the opportunity there is there to increase the economic base of the county. You can look at this graphic and see the dark blue lines are the existing extent of our water main network throughout the county. The light blue lines are the water main networks for other utilities, such as cities and private utilities that operate within the county. I'd like to focus on that one right there, that employment center. That's called the Central Pasco Employment Village. It's essentially along State Route fifty-two from Aaron Cut Off to Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. You can see that there isn't any adequate water supply near that employment center. We already have commitments for development in that area that would also benefit from extensions in that area. Our plan is to take advantage of an upcoming Florida DOT construction project. The DOT plans to widen State Route fifty-two from Aaron Cut Off to Bellamy Brothers. They're going to start sometime next year. It would be great if we could start this water main enforcement extension project to coincide with the DOT construction project, with the hopes of minimizing disturbance to the traveling public in the future, and also by saving costs upfront. If we are able to incorporate into the DOT project, in today's dollars, we'll be saving in the future in terms of the necessary water and sewer improvements needed for that quarter. That shows you the extent of where the water main connection would have to occur. Essentially, we would have to bring water mains from US forty-one up Aaron Cut Off to fifty-two, along fifty-two, down Old Pasco Road, to create another loop that would increase flows and pressures in that area. On the sewer side, similar thing. Here is the Central Pasco Employment Village, and you can see that we don't also, we also don't have adequate sewer network near that employment village. Our plan is to, again, leverage that DOT project to build the enforcement along the fifty-two corridor with the road construction project. That one will also require enforcement extensions all the way to the Wesley Center wastewater plant project. This is a blow-up of that corridor along fifty-two. You have Aaron Cut Off on the west side, there's fifty-two, all the way to I seventy-five, Old Pasco Road, and down Old Pasco Road. The plan is to build both water and sewer extensions on Aaron Cut Off, fifty-two, Old Pasco Road, to serve that employment village, but in the process of serving that employment village, there's a potential area, what we call a service area, that has almost sixteen thousand equivalent residential units in that area. An equivalent residential unit is essentially one ERU is the size of a typical average single-family home that requires water and sewer service from the county. With those water mains enforcements being planned for that area, we expect to serve around sixteen thousand ERUs in the area. Some of which would be office and industrial, which generate jobs for the county. The plan is to construct these improvements to coincide with a phase out that's over four phases over the next ten years, but starting now with the DOT construction project. Those four phases will cost somewhere around sixty-two million dollars in today's dollars, of which, starting a couple of years ago, we budgeted fifteen million dollars for just water and sewer improvements along fifty-two, but at that time, we had not finished the master plans. We weren't sure the extent of how far beyond that corridor we would need pipelines. We now think that all those pipelines on Aaron, fifty-two, and Old Pasco, it's going to take about sixty-two million dollars worth of improvements, of which the county would fund a quarter of that upfront. We have been working with a group of private investors, a group of property owners, that could fund another forty percent of the total cost, and the remaining third would come in the form of a utility surcharge fee assessed for each equivalent residential units. The county would fund that money upfront, but then we would reimburse over time as those developments came online. With that, we're recommending that you approve the resolution that could serve not just the service area that's highlighted in blue in the graphic, but potentially, if there's sufficient capacity available toward the end of the project, we may also be able to serve areas west of Aaron Cut Off in those pink highlighted areas. Recommend you accept public comments and adopt the resolution. This is part of a companion item that will be heard next.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Could you go back to the slide with the finances? So the shortfall of twenty-two million dollars, is that expected to be collected a hundred percent out of this lower number, are the other surcharges coming up?
Yes, based on those assumptions. So what we're assuming is that eighty percent of the total entitled ERUs will actually be built there, and we develop a fee based on that eighty percent buildup. By the way, Commissioner, we also looked at if there were any federal state grants available to fund that shortfall. We cannot find any right now. Most of the grants are associated with water quality improvements, nutrient reduction, things like that, but for extensions, we could not find one right now. The other thing I failed to mention is that the fees will be assessed and collected on applications for connections to those mains. Within that service area, there are approximately fifty to sixty single-family residentially-zoned lots that would not be required to connect to the system. They are small enough, the comprehensive plan doesn't require them to connect to our system based on their density.
What's the total number of dollars for the office and industrial uses? What do you expect that number to be?
We're not going to assess a fee on the office and industrial, because one of the reasons is that it's going to benefit the employment center in terms of providing that water and sewer supply for the employment center. So all land uses except office and industrial will be assessed.
Okay, so we could be expected to carry, on the other basis with the residential, it could be twenty, thirty years before we get our money back from this whole system, correct?
It could be, depending on the build-out schedule for each development.
All right, so knowing that, I mean, you say there's no grants available for the lines that we're trying to get, that we are trying to bring office and industrial. And then looking at the jobs that are needed from this nation that we saw earlier today, I would like us to somehow be able to structure this where we can go after that number, which would supplant some of this other monies, rather than waiting thirty years to get it. But not put us to say we're going to supplant the money, so we can't go after the grants, but if there's something that's out there, and again, with all the things that are out there, I mean, we could put an AM skills plant out there, help train, other things could come out there between HVACs, et cetera. So I want to make sure we don't trap ourselves to be locked in the agreement where I can't go get that extra money. So I don't know how we structure it, but just like we talked about the other day, I don't want to be trapping us to the all four phases until I know that I've at least looked at what I can get for the, let's say, for even the final phase.
Well, fortunately, we have budget, or we will be proposing a budget that's a four- or five-year phased budget for the project, so it's possible that in the out-years, we could eliminate those funds if we were to be able to secure some state or federal grant for it, without affecting our obligations to the joint funding agreement.
So, and again, to guarantee the joint funding agreement, but I want to make sure we have the verbiage in there that says we can go get outside money if it's available.
Chair.
Yep.
Understood, Commissioner.
Can we go back to, what, about the sixteen thousand units, additional units? Is that what you're saying? So approximately fifteen thousand units, they're probably, those folks are probably on septic and well?
No, sir. Most of those are vacant, unimproved properties right now.
Yeah, they're not.
But without this, they'll be likely on septic.
Ooh, in a recharge.
Within the blue area.
In a recharge area. My point, where I'm going with this is the wellfields and the recharge area, and if we're looking at, as commerce comes online and firms capture these properties, if there's utilities there, the septic to sewer conversion funds potentially, because if we don't do this, and they're all going to be on septic system, right? And it's going straight to Tampa Bay's drinking water supply.
Yeah.
So, on top of already the folks that are on septic and well in the area.
Your argument is basically it's a preemptive.
Correct, correct. And that's, you know, fifteen thousand, that's, you see some of the numbers that septic sewer projects that are in the low thousands, you know, this is.
Well, those fifteen thousand are future developments, future lots to be improved. They don't account for any existing developments right now.
Correct.
So for instance, in that blue area, there is somewhere just under sixty lots that are zoned single-family residential. All other lots within their zone, some other kind of zoning, commercial, agricultural, industrial, but those single-family residential are not required to connect, even if they had a water main and sewer system along their property front, because it's a low density. Now, it could be done in terms of a septic-to-sewer program, but they're very small areas that we would then incorporate as an individual sub-project.
Yeah, so it gives them an option to get off, maybe they abandon their septic system, and they stay on their well, if their well's still good, but at least it's an opportunity to get off, get off their septic.
We can't make them attach?
No. It doesn't require them to connect to it. They can voluntarily, or the county could find.
I thought if they were a certain distance, they had to.
Yeah, usually if you have a gravity main within a certain distance, you can, you are required to connect within a year, but this type of.
Because I'd like to get everyone's.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't like try to imagine the Phillips family trying to connect to fifty-two and hooking up.
Oh, yeah.
Three-mile run, you cannot do that.
No, but if there's someone in this area where we're coming down the street.
Well, I mean, fifty-two is right in front of the Phillips property too, but, you know, you wouldn't make them have to run a line that far.
No.
But, and again, and I'm trying to make sure that as this is structured, that we do not prevent ourselves, whether it be a septic sewer win, that they actually see the value to that, or some other grant that's out there, whatever it may be, I want to make sure we can still go after the grant funds at the same time not slowing down what we're trying to do, at least phase one, two, three.
But I mean, the basic question, Adolfo, is, does this agreement prohibit us from pursuing any additional funds? I don't see how a private agreement would.
It does not.
Prevent us from doing that.
No, it may not prevent us from doing it with them, but if I get a government agency saying, well, you've already got it funded, we're not going to give you the money, that's what I'm afraid of. I want to say that we have some type of clause in there that says we can go after the money, and this agreement acknowledges that. If not, we'll cover it, but if we can go find funds, we're going to try to do it, on our end.
But I think your problem would be with the federal government, not necessarily with the parties, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Probably, but the state could do the same thing. I mean, SwifM, look how those agreements go. If we get outside money from the feds, SwifM takes their share and cuts it out. I don't want to have any of that happen. I want to just take a shot, whatever may happen. Maybe we put a big AM skills out there, maybe floor build some big training facility, or some AC company, like Train wants to go build something for training. I don't want to prevent any of that, being able to change, to try to get that money.
But if you're going to put a clause in the agreement that says you can go after a grant, Ms. Wolf Graham is cutting me off, so I will yield to the Senior Assistant County Attorney.
I'm Jordan Wolf Graham, Senior Assistant County Attorney. I think what you're trying to avoid is a supplanting issue, and because the agreement does not, we cannot tie the board's hands. So because you annually appropriate your budget, the agreement. So because you annually appropriate your budget, the agreement will not interfere with your ability to remove that from your budget in order to avoid supplanting if grant funds become available later.
So if we put some type of clause like that in this contract, I'd feel a little more comfortable, but I want to make, if that covers us with other grants, that's great, but I think we should at least make mention of it, that we could look to other things, we want to have that option without affecting other contributions that have been coming in.
Okay, and I spoke with Clark, who represents most, let me let him speak for his one.
Commissioners Clark, Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109 North Brush Street, Tampa, Florida. The property owners group has no objection to that, Commissioner. I certainly understand what staff is saying, which is, they would, what they would likely do if you ever were to receive that kind of funding was they would adjust the calculations for the charges at the time, which I think they'll be required to do, but we have no objection if in your resolution, you wanted to add a clause that said there's nothing to prevent the county from later adjusting it based on grants that it receives.
Let me ask this, are we paying a full fifty percent, or are we paying a little bit more than fifty percent, the way this comes out, all phases?
For phases one through three, the county will be paying fifty percent of the total cost for phases one through three, and then for phase four, the county is fully funding phase four.
Okay, so I want to be able to make sure until that fully funding that we're paying for at the end, whatever that number is, that we can get grant money all the way to that, before I worry about splitting back with the other parties. I want to be able to reach out as much as I can. If we collect more than what that other extra money is, then we can go back to it, but I don't want to be taken, when we're fronting the end, I want to make sure we collect everything up to that bid before we start going back to do a separation and split.
And you're wanting that done in the agreement, this item is for the resolution, and the resolution has some assumptions baked into it that we made to calculate the surcharge. So if grant funding was received, that's what Clark's referring to, is we would have to go back and recalculate the surcharge based on the funding that was received.
But if I'm doing the final phase, where I'm covering the full cost, and that money can be tied to that, there's no reason to go split back and recalculate those other numbers. I'm paying more than fifty percent because I'm covering the last phase, right?
Of the overall project, yes.
Right, so I want to make sure that if I'm going to get money, I'm going to make sure I'm collecting all that money before we dip into recalculating the other monies.
Commissioner, I think the point that Jordan's trying to make is, when the county adopts this kind of resolution, it's based on mathematical assumptions, and if you get more money in there, they necessarily have to recalculate the funds at that point. I don't think there's anything wrong with putting in the resolution some kind of savings clause, which is what you're talking about, but to be clear, that the property owners group portion of it, this is only on the county's funding, we wouldn't receive any of this funding in any event. So this is the county's money, and if it wants to have language in its own resolution adopting this, that has a savings clause, it gives the county to readjust it based on grants, there's nothing wrong with that.
So based upon the fifty-fifty split, if I go outside source, and I get all my money from an outside source, and I cover myself that way, you're not going to be looking to claw back fifty percent?
We don't, it's very clear in the agreement, we don't get any of that. All we're doing is getting reimbursed from the county on a specified fifty percent, and then, what we would have to do later, if the grants occur, is you might not need all of the surcharge revenue to make the county whole, because the way this is set up, and just want everybody to know in the public, the county's getting made completely whole on its investment here. The POG is not. We're paying, the net amount, the property owners group is going to net pay for the majority of this, unrecouped. So, but if the county recoups more money so that it doesn't have to use general revenue funds or whatever, we have no objection to it. We have no right to that money under the agreement anyway. All you're doing is reimbursing us for up to fifty percent of what we spend designing, permitting, and constructing the project.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. All right, so with my concerns, do I need to do anything different with the resolution here, or is that going to cover the next item?
I think you'd want to cover that in the next item, because that relates to the POG, not the collection of the surcharge.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there anyone here in the public who wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll take a motion, thank you.
Wait a second, if I may. Jordan, if I just understood the conversation correctly, wouldn't the Commissioner want to put it in the resolution, not the agreement? Because what the representations have been is that the, they can't claw it back based on the agreement. The, what the Commissioner is asking for is that the surcharge would be readdressed, I think, if we can get money.
It would already, it would already have to be readdressed, because the assumptions would be, would change, and it says it will be reevaluated if the assumptions change. I thought the concern was the POG having some right to any offset costs we found for the grant money, is that...
And Mr. Hobby represented that it's clear that they don't, in the agreement.
Correct.
So I don't, my concern is, you just said, address it in the next item, the next item would be the agreement, that, and what I'm hearing is that the agreement doesn't need to be addressed.
Technically, it doesn't, but if the Commissioner wants the language about the grant to protect the county's interest and prevent the POG from getting it, I can double down.
I would like to see protection, whether it be one or the other, I'm just taking guidance from my expert, what's the best way to do it?
Commissioners, there is a clause in the resolution that states that if the underlying assumptions change as to how we calculated that connection fee, then the county can come back and amend the connection fee, reduce it, increase it, based on changes to the underlying assumptions. It's based on what we think we're going to have to fund for the project. If we end up getting grants for it, that's a significant underlying assumption that changed, we could then go back, amend the resolution to reduce.
But if I get that extra money, I'm not looking to amend the resolution, I will keep the splits just the way they're going now. I just want to make sure that if we do get it, that they can't come back and claw back from us. You got this much money, we're going to take this much back.
If I may, Madam Chairperson, Joel Tu, I'm also representing Eisenhower Property Group. At the risk of complicating it, I'm going to try to clarify it. The existing agreement, let's talk about that first, because I really think that's where, that's where part of the Commissioner's concern is coming. The existing agreement says that the surcharge is for two reasons. It is to ensure a future mechanism for one-hundred percent payback of the county loan amount that you're advancing to get the work done now. That's obviously a primary goal, but the second reason is to make sure that third parties who aren't funding twenty-five million dollars, which my clients are not getting back their twenty-five million, on top of paying their base connection fees, and on top of paying their surcharge, is to make sure a third-party interloper can't come in and connect to that system for just a base connection fee without also paying what would be a fair proportionate share for that money that's been spent. So that's why there was a mechanism, that the surcharge is established an amount that's more than your required payback, and once you're paid back, that's when it becomes a fifty-fifty split, because the county has made an investment, and the private POG members have made an investment. So I think you have to be careful about saying, we're just going to eliminate a surcharge if you get grant money. Now, obviously, what would happen, it would depend entirely on how much grant money did you get, and I think what Clark and the county attorney are saying is that if and when you get a grant, so that you know exactly what you have, then you would be required to obviously adjust the surcharge ordinance, but all I'm saying is, it's not simply mathing, because you would have to say, okay, what is still a reasonable amount to charge for that proportionate share amount to avoid that system? So that's what I'm concerned about. Now, the way the agreement is worded right now, I agree, there's nothing there that precludes you whatsoever from seeking a grant, because it basically says you fund this however you decide to fund it. Okay, it's open-ended. And logically, if you've got a ten-million-dollar grant, then you would reduce your loan amount, and the fact that you got the ten-million-dollar grant would go to reduce your loan amount, and therefore, you would be paid back sooner on your loan, and once you're a hundred percent paid back between any grant and the surcharge, once you're a hundred percent made whole, that's when the fifty-fifty split stops. So in my view, what really should happen is I actually would not change the surcharge ordinance, because as the county attorney said, you would wait and revisit that based on what grant amount you do or don't get. I would suggest that you just add the provision you're looking for, a short provision added to the funding agreement that says nothing herein precludes the county from seeking and procuring state or federal grants, in which event, any grant amount would reduce the required county loan amount. It's just that simple. Because the intent is for you to get wholly paid back, but only get wholly paid back, not more, and then once you're wholly paid back, the deal's fifty-fifty on the surcharge. But I'd just be careful building in language that suggests the surcharge might go away due to a grant, because you still need to charge new third parties a reasonable proportionate amount to tap into a system. So I hope that helps, but my suggestion is to just add that provision to the funding.
All right, Mr. County Attorney?
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, so then I'm ready for a motion, but I need, what are we putting in?
I'm ready to make a motion, but I want to make sure how we want to structure the language that you...
Well, this, based on, based on what I've just heard, you don't need to make any modifications to the resolution.
At all.
It's the next item, didn't you?
Okay, all right. Any approval?
Second. Okay, and I don't think this is a...
No, it's not.
Okay. Any more discussion from the public? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Woo, that was a lot of work for everybody, I know. Okay, now we're going to go to... Yeah, the R, okay. Are you doing that one too?
Yes.
Okay.
Adolfo Gonzalez, Utilities Engineering and Contract Management Director. R-56 is file number UTD 26-0085, joint funding agreement between Pasco County, Mew Landco Liquidating Company LLC, SF Landco Liquidating Company LLC, EPG Hillcrest Holdings LLC, EPG Palmetto Ridge Holding LLC, Lennar Homes LLC, Palmetto Ridge Cattle Company LLC, and Gen Hold Co. 24 LLC. Stay Row 52, Old Pasco Road Utilities Corridor, forty million, seven-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars. This, Commissioner, is the follow-up to the resolution. I had mentioned some of the reasons or the criteria we use to extend water and sewer mains. Typically, when they're required to be extended by the county, it's because we already have commitments out there in terms of where we have to provide additional water sewer service. In addition to that, we sometimes require developers to extend water and sewer mains if it's within the comprehensive plan thresholds for them to extend those lines. When our extension is optional for developers, when they exceed, when their property exceeds the threshold for extending water and sewer facilities to their site, at that point, can then voluntarily decide to fund the improvements completely, or find some other means of providing water and sewer for their properties. Our current policy for quite some time has been developers pay for extensions, county pays for water and wastewater plant expansions. That's what we typically do based on the comp plan thresholds. We already have a master plan created for that Stay Row 52 utility corridor that includes the right-sized water and sewer facilities to serve that corridor from fifty-two to Old Pasco Road, essentially all the way to I-75, over the course of several phases. The plan is to build what is needed for the first three phases of expected ERU or development activity in that area with that DOT construction project. This graphic shows the limits of the water facilities needed for that Stay Row 52 corridor, essentially all the way from US 41, up Aaron cutoff, fifty-two, and down Old Pasco Road.
Can I ask you a question on this, real quick? So, this is coming, what's going down Old Pasco, that's not existing? Am I understanding that right?
Correct, none of that along...
No, on the right, on Old Pasco.
There are some water mains on Old Pasco, but the, there is an additional parallel water main that needs to be constructed to provide enough fire flow and...
Okay, so here's my question, this is what I'll write, maybe it's a funding thing, but, I mean, that road's under construction. Are you going to tear it up? Whatever's being done now, are we going to go back in and tear it up to put this in?
Some of that is already under construction, it's part of the Old Pasco Road widening project.
Right, so, this isn't permanent or designed or anything yet, right? So now you're going to go back in and tear it up?
I'm pretty sure, Adolfo, that there were old plans on the books that accounted for the widening of Old Pasco Road, and as well as placing the utilities, I think we could call that being in your role many, many years ago.
Mike, I can't, I don't think anyone can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think it's counted for, but...
It would be on the west side of the road, right?
Yeah, there were already plans, I mean, when I first started working for the county, there were plans that were already on the books, I mean...
So the plans are done already?
And construction is underway.
Yes.
For that second...
Okay, but you're putting this in now?
Yes.
While we're doing the construction?
Yes, because that was needed for one of the first phases of development in there, that northwest quadrant of I-75 and fifty-two.
Okay, just so many times, we don't put it in, because the developers aren't paying for it, so then we have to come back and tear up something we just did to put the stuff in.
Commissioner, I just asked the engineer, one of those lines already is in, in Old Pasco Road. The developers literally have been paying and doing this, and we've been negotiating the agreement. The second line, the plans are approved, and they are doing directional drilling where required. They're intentionally not impacting the roadway work, so they, their plans contemplated that work, and they're working around it.
Yeah, that's the right way to do it, okay.
So Chair, so, this plan today allows us to really work in concert with DOT and get this project into the, in the ground, and when they start their road project, it's not going to prolong Bob's barricades, which is good for Bob's barricades, up and down, east and west on fifty-two with, they built the road, now dig it up, put pipe in, then repave the road again, like we should be able to actually have a fluid, help DOT have a fluid project here.
Yes, sir, that is the plan, to do it concurrent with the road construction. This is a graphic of the planned sewer improvements along the fifty-two and Old Pasco Corridor, and again, the intent is to do it with the road construction to minimize any disturbance to the public. I mentioned the comprehensive plan distance thresholds when developers are required to extend mains, so for large master plan communities, over a hundred ERUs, the distance threshold is a mile for sewer and up to a mile and a half for water, but in this case, we have over thirteen miles of water main, transmission mains that need to be built, and over nine miles of sewer that needs to be built to provide adequate flow and pressure to that corridor. Because of that, we decided to leverage that public-private partnership with the property owners group to fund the sixty-two million dollars of construction, of which, we are hard-funding fifteen million dollars, the other twenty-three million dollars that we're funding upfront, we intend to get reimbursed via that utility surcharge connection that you just approved. And that is to serve the central Pasco Employment Village, as well as the service area in blue, with the possibility of extending that area, if there's capacity available, to the areas in pink. With that, we recommend approval of the joint funding agreement.
And your issue?
I want to have the language stated by the county attorney to add on to it, something we need.
You're the one who's negotiating with them.
Well, Clark said he was going to talk and then pitch it to me, so I was going to... Anyways, yeah, I was typing while we were talking, so I'm not exactly sure where to put it in the agreement on the fly here, but I'm thinking something to the effect will be added to the agreement that says, notwithstanding any of the county funding provisions, the county retains the right to apply for and utilize grant funding sources for the county loan amount, which is a defined term in here related to phases one through four.
Okay, is there anyone here who wishes...
I think it would be one of the, one of the letters... I think it would be one of the letters, you know, you get...
Yes, I'm specifically looking at...
Four.
Part B where it talks about phase one through three, infrastructure cost allocation, there's a sub-paragraph E that I think is where we're going to put it.
Okay, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to address this?
Sorry?
It's not a public hearing item, but you can hear from the, you can hear from the folks that'll be signing the agreement.
Commissioners, I just wanted to take a few minutes. I, you know, I've sat here for so many years and sometimes I can't stand it when people go on and pontificate when we get to the end of a big project like this, but I can't let today go by without thanking your staff and our team, and there's some, I've been working on this for two and a half years, and this week I had to go back and look at how much time I had, and I have over 300 hours working on this in the last two and a half years. What happened here is our clients bought a bunch of property and you all approved the zoning for it, and we all thought we were going hunky-dory down the road, then we found out that the pipes that were out in front of some of these big projects just literally did not have any capacity. And that started a very long-winded discussion with Pasco County Utilities about how we might fix it, and basically, we're fixing a regional issue for the county, working together in a partnership. But we could not have done this without Jordan's help, Branford's help, this guy Adolfo over here spent a ton of time and effort with us, David has worked on it, Mike's been in some of the meetings, David Allen and David Engel have been in meetings, but Joel, Ed Rogers on our end, and Jordan Walker, our other PE of record who's laid out a lot of the phase work that's going to occur here, have all been working on this nonstop for two years now. And what ended up happening in this process by working together, and there were points we didn't think this could happen, is we will make sure that the county's whole on this project at the end of the day, so the county will make a bunch of money selling the utility services over time to the developments in this corridor, we will have paid the county back, and we have built this gigantic infrastructure that will serve this whole corridor for years to come, and we will make sure that it's done ahead of the DOT project.
We need to show Hillsborough County how to do it.
Yeah, yeah, so, I just...
You know how long we waited for that plant in Southern Hillsborough County?
Again, to Joel and to our whole team and our clients for letting us do this. This was a difficult project, but it's ended up being a great project for everybody involved, so I thank you all and your staff for working with us on it. Thank you.
And I do have one question, not, it's not for Clark, but, you know, I listened to all the planning commission meetings, and it used to be that they were saying, is the infrastructure in place for this? And I haven't heard that in a long time, but as we're checking through the boxes, you know, is someone checking to see if we need, that we're up to date on our water sewer? Seems to me that this happened on VOPH as well, we kind of got caught without a utility plan, is that right?
Yeah, the utilities are undergoing regular master planning. I know, I think we've got, Adolfo, we've got a couple of items that are either going through, or sometimes they run together, so the team has done a phenomenal job, you know, there's nice, nice words there from Mr. Hobby, but I would say that ultimately, this is, this is just a great example of trying to get ahead of the game, there's great system benefits as a result of this that benefit all the rate pairs of Pasco County, and I think too, you know, doing this in conjunction where we can with road widening projects, definitely, you know, we only like to touch things once, sometimes in government we'll touch things two or three or four or five times in sequence, and I think it's, I think it's a boon to the public as well, and just has a great public benefit to everything that we're doing here today, so.
Is there another area in the county where you think we'll be looking at next?
Along the county line road corridor at the very north end of the county.
I saw some shady hills up the county line up in there. Okay, all right.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion?
I make a motion, and let me just quickly say, Adolfo, Joel, Clark, everybody, you guys have done phenomenal work on this thing all the way through, I just want to make sure we protected ourselves with that one clause, and glad to hear that Old Pasco Road is being, has been being done, because I wasn't sure of that, but great, great news there. So I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions stated by staff that we can be protected to go get grants that won't impede the funding of this agreement.
I'll second.
And again, thank you to everyone who worked on this, it's great when we can all work together like this and achieve something so, so important for the county. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, great job, everybody.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Money for the county.
And make sure that we're taking care of the cogan grass over there. Oh, man, CPEB or whatever it's called. And when are we going to get a new name?
Did we do the...
I can't take that name. Full cogan grass. Okay, well now, what are you up here for?
Tapper Resolution for John Hopkins.
Oh, okay.
We approved publication of this item in the Tempe Times on October 12, 2025.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This is kind of, this is a pretty easy thing.
Yep, all right, so Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco County's Office of Management and Budget. Item P-69 is a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act application and public hearing for John Hopkins All Children's Hospital. All right, so a Tapper hearing, so federal tax law allows for the issuance of tax-exempt bonds for qualified private activity. IRS regulations require approval from the county commission as the highest elected governing body with jurisdiction over the area in which the project will occur. A finding, the project is in the public interest, and a public hearing to gather input from the public. Approval will allow the Johns Hopkins Health System Corporation to borrow at a tax-exempt rate. The hospital system is seeking to borrow up to $280 million. Funds will be issued by the Maryland Health and Higher Education Facilities Authority, not Pasco County, and the purpose of the bonds is to finance the acquisition, construction, renovation, or equipping of a five-story, approximately 226,000 square foot patient care facility located in Wesley Chapel, which will include 56 patient care units with an emergency department, imaging, surgery, ambulatory care, that is hard to say, and supporting services, and will fund capitalized interest and other costs of issuance. It's important to remember that the county is not responsible for paying the debt service, there's no cost to the county resulting from the approval of this application, and Johns Hopkins is not borrowing from Pasco County. All right, so recommended action, except public comment and vote on the resolution.
Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item? Saying that, I have one question for the county attorney. I am on the Board of Trustees for Johns Hopkins, but do I need to recuse myself, or I don't?
That's not a paid position, is it?
No.
No, you would not need to.
The opposite.
Yeah, no, you would not need to. I think, I think we, we did this research before, I, I'm pretty sure that you're, you're fine if it's an unpaid position.
Okay. Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion, yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Anybody online?
No, no one's been online all day. Okay, all right, thank you very much. We are on to the county administrators.
Administrator?
Yeah.
I'd like to show those pictures of the Elks if I could, and then just one quick thing about the disaster recovery meetings that are coming up.
He had pictures he was wanting to show before, but they hadn't loaded up yet.
So there's all the veterans over there.
This is the ARPICA event.
That's the steps to recovery and the Elks members that were there for the banquet.
Nice.
All just the veterans themselves. ROTC was there, Junior ROTC, did a great job. I got to speak a little bit about the great things we're doing here in Pasco.
Look at that tie.
Who is it?
As the president. But, they were very, very pleased, very happy, it's just, it's just great to see the camaraderie of the whole group. Okay, and if you could, let's put up the disaster recovery housing program meetings, and I think it's good to see it, because if people could pull online to see the picture, they'd know the meetings. These meetings, I think we all met now with the program.
You guys got a brochure here.
Yeah, so I think they're doing a phenomenal job, the first meeting comes out November 18th, 19th, 20th, and the 22nd, 24th, 25th. I'm going to be able to hit, I think, the first four of them, I won't be able to hit the other two, but I think everybody has an opportunity here to hit one meeting or another. The program, as they get started, is going to be able to help some, some things a little bit quicker, but March is like when the most going, but the eligible activities for the individual housing, for reimbursement of repair expenses for homeowners, repair construction of elevation of homes, demolition and clearance of blight instructions, the voluntary buyout location, all the requirements tied back to Hurricane Adalia, Helena, Milton, and household income at 80% or below the area median income is going to be critical, and those are going to be taken care of first, and I think it's important that we all know that we need to make sure that we get this not only approved and funded, but we don't have any clawbacks later on because we didn't hit that 70% threshold, so I'm comfortable with staff making sure we get to those numbers, figure out how we got to get there, before we actually have the other people with higher incomes that are going to get some help too.
And I'm grateful for staff who swapped in the November 18th with the November 22nd because that's the only meeting I can attend, and I wanted to be sure, because the 19th, I have NACO, a FAC, and I have my husband's charity event, so, in Tampa, so I can only go to one, and I plan to be there on 18th.
And I'm going to go to the FAC, but I'm going to drive back to the night time.
Yeah, I got this event, my husband's the big speaker, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just one item really, I'd just like to take a second to acknowledge our emergency management team, you may or may not be aware, but in September and October, there were a number of flash floods in Hila, Arizona, so we deployed a team out there, Andy and some of our folks, to provide emergency management services to that area, and they've done a phenomenal job, but just Andy had given a shout-out to the various areas of the county that also assisted with this, namely our media relations and communications team, who stepped up in a big way, our solid waste department, especially the debris management, also stepped up, purchasing GIS and other team members, and so again, just another great example of how we've leveraged our experience with disaster to help other communities, and it continues to help our folks train and to be better at what we do.
So I talked to Andy about his trip, and he said that because they are not used to having emergency, you know, disasters, they had no idea how to do disaster pickup and the communications part, and that we were kind of running the communications from here for them. So they were out there for, I think, two weeks, and I'm sure that I'll talk to the commissioners from there.
Yeah.
I'm so proud of our guys.
We see it as a good example to not only train, but also give back and assist wherever others need, so Pasco's out there in the forefront, that's all.
Okay, I never remember which one, but you.
And this time I have something.
Yes, you do.
No, you don't need, don't need a litigation assessment meeting, as the, as the board is aware, there was pending litigation, Coastline Boat Lift Covers versus Pasco County. On October 27th, 2025, the court dismissed their case against us based on the adoption of the new ordinance. There was a motion for summary judgment that had been issued by the court April 20th, 2023, which we appealed to the Second DCA based on the error, we think, in the court's language regarding the advertisement for the 2019 ordinance. Second DCA said, basically, it was premature to appeal at that point because a final action had not been taken in the case. While I believe the court was in error in that summary judgment motion, I also am aware that if, and now it would be ripe to appeal, I'm also aware that the district courts of appeal are highly unlikely to take a case which has been resolved in all other aspects. And by your adoption of the new ordinance, I think that would be the position they would take. So, long way of saying, while I would like to appeal it, I am recommending that you not appeal it because I don't think we'll get anywhere, it'll just be good money after bad, so to speak.
Well, that makes sense.
And at this point, the, the issue with regarding, regarding boat covers and the, that particular vendor has been settled, I think we let sleeping dogs lie and move forward.
Sounds good.
That's it.
Do you have anything?
And Madam Clark has nothing to bring up.
Okay, now my last, sorry, I have a lot. On the TDC, first of all, I need your approval for two new appointments, Erica Broadnax and Antonio Perez.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. So as Mr. Jaeger mentioned, we had the dedication, we had a couple dedications, we dedicated the new kitchen, and the county administrator was there, and then we dedicated the, you see the sign here, the Wilton Simpson Self-Sufficiency Residential Center, all these signs, they were new to this, to this event, also the Scott and Kathy Fink West Pasco Campus, so just a great morning. What they have done and invested in, in what the west side of the county is amazing, and the community is forever grateful, they are helping so many families to get back on their feet. So, great event. Let's see what, oh, so this is Scott Fink's, no, not Scott Fink, Tim Mark's retirement party, we had it down at the yacht club in Tampa, and there's Mayor Castor, gave him a proclamation, and it was the who's who, I guess, of Tampa Bay, I don't know, it was quite the event, and it was a very nice send-off for Tim, who did such an amazing job at Metropolitan. This is, oh, so, let me say, let me cross these off, because these are not in order of what's on my paper, so TDC, Metmans, so as some of you know, I do a couple times a year, I take my international CEOs on field trips, and this was our latest field trip, so the first place we went to was the Hillsborough Pas, Public, PSOC, Public Safety, yeah, PSOC, I guess, Public Safety Operations Center. We went there, Commissioner Oakley, before, and they got to tour that and see what government does when there is a, a declared emergency, and then we went on to the Coca-Cola plants. The gentleman there by the red Coca-Cola bottle, Leroy, is the current chair of AMSKILLS, and he offered to give us a tour. I had eight or nine CEOs from the area, you see Metler Toledo, Touchpoint, a bunch of the companies here, Pharma Works, The Point, I can't remember all the companies, and then we toured their new state-of-the-art distribution center, which is right around the corner, so, at the end, we went to the Victory Ship, oh yeah, we had to wear these hats in the Coca-Cola plant. You know, they do the Smart Water, so if you're anywhere in the Southeastern United States and you're buying a bottle of Smart Water, not the one that, there's a special Smart Water, I didn't even remember what's in it, but the regular Smart Water, it's coming from here in Tampa, which I had no idea. So then we went to the American Victory Ship, Joe McGee, who's right behind me, is on the board, and they gave us a tour, that's the general there on the blue shirt, special ops guy in the other blue shirt, that gave us a tour, and you know what happens on these, is these businessmen talk to each other and, and business gets done, and Joe has a company who wants to move to Pasco County that is a, I think it's a perfume company, and needs a bottling plant, so he and Spencer are doing some business there, so, yeah, so it's really nice to have this, this going on. And then the one guy is from the XGen, XGenX, I don't remember how to say his company, next to Pascal from Touchpoint, he has an amazing company here in Pasco County.
We saw that.
Yeah, remember, and, and he was plugged into everything. Okay, next picture, get off of that one. Oh, I spoke at the Tampa Bay Chamber Public Policy Roundtable, two mornings in a row, I had to be in Hillsborough County like 7:30 in the morning, that was, that was a little tough. So that was what that was, they wanted to, those were the three chairs from three different counties. I also toured Saddle Brook. Look at that pool, what an improvement, and the clubhouse is looking beautiful, I'm very excited for them, and I told them, Jack, that we are going to work on getting back there for one of their meetings.
This time, yeah.
Okay, next, oh, so this is... Oh, so this is, this is a crazy thing that's going on. If you go down Little Road, this is the new Jallow Car Wash next to Pit Boss. And for some reason, these two don't connect. So Jallow has a D cell lane that goes into the car wash, and then Pit Boss, is there another picture? Did they do two pictures? Oh, watch this, watch this. So everyone's, they don't connect. Did you see the grass? So like, while I'm standing there, a car pulls into Jallow and then drives across. And I don't, I should, I had a picture of that, but everyone's, it's the craziest thing, and I don't understand why we don't, I thought we required, here's the car coming in. So I thought we required interconnects. And that just happened.
Jallow wanted to happen.
Well, it should be that they have to.
Usually takes two to tango. I can't speak in this particular case.
Yeah, so this is crazy, but, you know, that's what's going on there. I thought they were required to connect. Okay, next.
You would think so, because you see the curb cut.
I know. I did it my first time, too. And they told me, no, no, and I'd stop, like, what? They said, don't.
I think he's gonna tell us.
You gotta go around and go out, back on Little Road and come around.
You can tell you all about it.
Chair, David Allen, Assistant County Administrator Development Service. Yeah, this is, as Mr. Cardball said, it takes two to tango. We did require as part of the project to have that connection. However, the neighboring property owner, where the Pit Boss BBQ in the strip mall, was unwilling to approve of the connection between the two and then eliminate.
But his customers were benefiting, right?
Understand that, but again, it's a private property issue with a private property party that was unwilling to cooperate.
Well, does that look like it's stopping them?
Well, we're all finding a way to do that D cell lane and get in there, until they put something across there. Okay. All right. Then I had a meeting last week or two weeks ago with my constituents regarding this. I don't know, is it Panos? Who was at this meeting? Panos, were you there? No? Yeah. Okay. So if you wanna come up and explain this, and if you could put on the map Gulf Trace Boulevard and La Canto Street in San Luis, you'll see this in the big picture. These roads, this road used to connect, and when they built Gulf Trace Boulevard, they put in like, they stopped the connection. And I just want you to see, you know, I'm all about connections. I want to see why it's important. So, but if you wanna go ahead.
Yeah. Panos Konstas, Assistant Engineering Services Director. This was one of the connections that the board identified for us to explore back in, I believe in June or earlier than that. So this is the connection between San Luis Road and Gulf Trace Boulevard. So we coordinated with the local community. We had a meeting at their clubhouse. Commissioner Starky was there, I was there, and one of my staff was there to present the concept, which was shown just before. The community, there were about 15, I believe, attendees. They were very perceptive of the project. They were very positive. They themselves pointed out that that connection will improve the access to Gulf Trace Elementary and also Recreation Center, which is to the west of the connection. And also that that connection, because of those access improvements, the property values will be increased.
Okay. Will you zoom out there, please? I want you to see what these people have to do. Okay, if you live over here on the corner, let's say of Muir and San Luis, and you wanna take your kid to baseball practice or soccer, and they're not walking, they're not old enough, whatever. Yeah. You have to go all the way down. Zoom out more, please. You have to go all the way down, keep going to U.S. 19. Zoom out. Zoom out. You gotta go all the way through all these neighborhoods to get to U.S. 19, make a left turn up to Gulf Trace Boulevard, way up there, past Suncoast Toyota, and come around and go up Gulf Trace. And you live, like, it could take you one, two minutes, but instead you have to do that. Same with the elementary school. You see the elementary school there in Gulf Trace Boulevard. So how we let this happen, this is, everybody that was there was for this. I am sure we might hear, we might hear from the person on the corner, if it's an older person that doesn't have any kids in the park or the school, that they don't want any, all that traffic driving in front of their house. But for the vast majority of people here, it's gonna save lives. It's gonna save lives.
Should've been.
Yeah. So there are three or four of these around the county. One of them is Pepin. I know we had Mrs. Osteen come in here, but sometimes, I mean, this is just planning 101. You must have connections. So thank you so much for your teams for coming out and Godspeed on getting this connected. We own the land, right?
Yes, there's no right-of-way issue. We can build the road. Just now, we're trying to fund it in our CIP to do the design, and immediately after, we can go to construction. There's no any impediments to build the road with regards to right-of-way or utilities or anything like that, so.
Thank you so much. And we'll see this coming in front of us whenever they get the project ready and the funding. Thank you so much, Panos.
Thank you.
All right, what's next? Is there anything else for pictures? Okay. I also attended the inaugural education legislative partnership forum. I wish we had another half hour. I think it would've been great to take questions, but I thought it was wonderful. Did the Pit Boss, Jallow, that, that, Saddle Brook. Okay, so I wanted to talk about Charlie Kirk, and I just wondered, like many communities are doing, if we wanted to think about naming a road after him, so.
I looked at it.
Yeah. I don't know where or which one, but, you know, think about it, and let's maybe come back with some ideas. Maybe something in front of the county government? I don't know. I think it would be good. Legislative legislation has been filed for e-bikes, scooters, and pocket bikes, and rocket, whatever those things are called. Talking to a lot of commissioners from other counties, it's a problem everywhere. Actually, it's a problem across the whole United States. So I wrote to legislators who are sponsoring the bill and offered to work with them and give them stories about things that happened in our county. And Ralph, I'd love to work with you on that and wanna make sure we stay involved in that, because I wanna see something get through. And then lastly, I have some very, oh, I attended the AHAC workshop. That's a statewide workshop on affordable housing. And I did the Tampa Home Talk interview, but I wanna give you some sad news. Keith is gone, I think, but those of you, Mike, David, who worked on Starkey Ranch, that, I'm gonna get all choked up, that Matt Call, who was so instrumental in doing such a wonderful development, and worked for Wheelock, my son's company, you know, last couple of years ago, he developed pancreatic cancer, and he fought a very good fight, but he did pass away this week, so. They have a service for him on the 29th. Unfortunately, every Starkey's gonna be in Virginia, so we're gonna miss the service. But what they did with that P4, I think it was the first one in the country, with the Starkey K8 in the park and the county, I don't think any developer in the county has stepped up like they did. And I really wanted to get, tell him that and to thank him, but he went into hospice before I got that opportunity. So he has two young kids, and he will be very missed. Okay. With that, we're done. We're adjourned.
And wish everybody a wonderful.
Yes.
And grateful. Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you.